Record. All right. So I am going to get started. And with introducing Alexa Aviles as part of the interview process for South Central Brooklyn United for Progress, as we discussed, we are interviewing different candidates for the city council members. And so we're really pleased to have you here today to talk with some of the members of South Central United for Progress. And so it'll be about 15 minutes, give you a chance to talk about your platform, what you stand for, how you work in your community, as well as with, you know, co-members of the council. And but we'll also leave some time for the members to ask some questions, if that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to read a little bit about Alexa. Alexa Aviles is a proud Boricua, education activist, mother and community leader. Alexa grew up in East New York, Brooklyn, and has lived in District 38 Sunset Park for nearly two decades. Alexa's work is fueled by her personal experiences growing up and watching her mother support members of her own community. For the past decade, Alexa has served as the PS 172 PTA president. She is a member of the local community board seven. She serves as a parent representative of MS 88 school leadership team and as Chair of the New York City Youth Board, and it's also a proud member of the Democrat Socialist of America branch of New York City. Alexa's husband Frankie is a TWU local 101 member and a lifelong resident of Red Hook and Sunset Park. And Alexa states in her bio that through her city council run and community organizing work, she will address the root causes of the issues that impact working people's daily lives. She will demand justice for all New Yorkers, not just the wealthy, in order to build a place, a city that places the needs of El Pueblo, the people before profits. So thank you, Alexa, for joining us. And so I wonder if you just want to give just a few, you know, comments about what brought you to this moment and decision to run for city council?
Awesome. Well, thank you so much. It's always weird to hear your bio. But I appreciate it. So thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to talk to you today and for considering endorsing our campaign and all the work that you're doing for Brooklyn, for New York City. So I guess I will, I'll just give you two more bio bits, which I think inform really who I am and how I'm running. So Boricua, for those of you who don't know, but you're all New Yorkers, and you probably do, means from Puerto Rico, my family, I was born in Puerto Rico, but my family had one foot in the Lower East Side and once one foot in Puerto Rico when my father was murdered, our family ended up in East New York, Brooklyn, where I was raised. So that Brooklyn is the neighborhood that raised me. So as, as my bio mentioned, my mother was an incredibly strong woman. Our neighborhood, our family faced many struggles, much incarceration, housing insecurity, food insecurity, just deep poverty. However, she used her own experiences to become a, excuse me, my landline is always so perfect opportunity to ring. So she used her own personal experiences to help others in need and became a substance abuse counselor and really inspired within me. A commitment to collective responsibility and to service. And that has fueled my path into nonprofits, work in nonprofit community and in social justice philanthropy, where I've had the opportunity to really support and leverage resources to some of the most critical issues facing not only us in New York City, but across the country, mass incarceration, racial and gender discrimination, reproductive rights, governmental transparency and accountability. So why I'm running, I never imagined I'd be here. Many years, the community members would ask me to run, and I thought that was a crazy idea. But I am here because upon reflection of being in this community for 20 years, I have a really deep commitment to our neighbors, to our district. And the stakes are really high. And I realized that after so many years of working with family members in the community, working with organizations to knit together responses where there were governmental failures or simply not structures that were appropriate to address needs, it occurred to me that this is a really critical time for our neighborhood. We didn't, I didn't anticipate COVID, none of us did, when I actually announced and demonstrated that to me, that the time is still just as urgent and still as important to make sure that our community is centered always in decision making. And so with that commitment, with my own lived experience, with my professional experience, being a Latina and a mom of this community who is raising her children here, I just felt like representation was critical. And with the backing of so many community members, I agreed. And I am here today, running this campaign with our community.
Right, great. Well, thank you for that. Um, so I'd like to ask you, you've done an excellent job of filling out the questionnaire, which is posted. You know, we go into some, you know, very specific issues. And I think that, you know, people can read the, you know, those questionnaires, but I would like to ask you to kind of just lay out some of your, your top platform issues. And then I'd like to follow up with the question of like, how do you plan to affect that change? Like, how will you work with the other council members? How will you work with the, you know, community to, you know, realize your very aspirational goals?
All right. Thank you for the question. On, you know, I guess the first thing that always emerges when we think about the critical issues that we're facing, right, is we're still in the middle of a pandemic. And for many of our immigrant community members, you know, we're still talking about survival and basic needs. And so I often, I lead with that because that is, that sadly, I think, we're going to be in this period for a while where we need to seriously address and center the most essential needs of our community. And that's basic needs. It's, it's food, it's housing, right, it's employment. So how I look at that also, so it's survival and basic needs supported by budget justice. And when I say budget justice, I really mean centering and recalibrating our city budget on the most critical issues facing our community, right? And really taking a hard look at the budget that is obviously supporting citywide, but figure out ways where the pressing, the most pressing needs are prioritized and funded. So that is going to be really the most, I think, critical piece. Sadly, our community has not received a fair share of funding around services. This is kind of well documented, and yet a community that is very vulnerable. So we need to figure out a way to better.
No work.
Oops, sorry about that. So budget, budget justice, and that's going to take recalibrating and really deep dive into the budget, which I think we're all going to be looking at very closely. The, the next piece, as a mother who has committed so much time, and also who has so much passion around education, education justice is critical for our families. And quality education should not be determined on your zip code and your home address, or how you look, or what your religion is. We can do better at providing equality education for our students. And so that's going to be another critical issue. And there are distinct needs in our district that may be a little different from other districts. However, I think quality education is something that crosses, crosses across the whole city. And there are ways we can certainly do better. And then lastly, affordable housing, housing is a critical issue. I'm sure you hear this from every candidate. It is a thing that I hear over and over again, housing insecurity, people concerned. Hopefully, we'll figure out a way to cancel rent, or ensure that people in small homes, that we cancel mortgages and figure out a way to keep people stably housed, and how to really use our resources for the social housing, for the truly affordable housing that we need. We have a glut of luxury market rate. And we have a growing problem of very low income housing. The numbers are staggering and they're appalling. And for a city with so much wealth, that should not be the case. So how I intend to effectuate this very, this very broad and important complex agenda, honestly, is this is an incredible opportunity that we have as a city with new council members, with, with the amount of new council members, and certainly with the mayor. Right? So it really is about bold vision, pursuing that bold vision with rigor, and the urgency that it requires, because the truth of the matter is, people are hungry, people are losing their homes, and we need to never lose sight of that. I, I remember what it is to be hungry as a child. If you, if you have that fire, you won't lose sight of it. And so pursuing it with rigor, pursuing it obviously in partnership and collaboration, I could not do that alone. It will require us to work together, right? And it will require, hopefully, an alignment and a pushing with the new mayor. And hopefully, there is alignment of values and priorities in a really challenging time that centers our community. But I feel that we have an incredible opportunity, because I think people are coming in feeling, feeling urgent and understanding that we have been doing things that have not prioritized and centered communities, and certainly have not centered the most vulnerable and the ways that we need. And we keep demonstrating the same outcomes, right? Increase in equity. We haven't been able to address it, and it really demands a different approach. And so those are some of the ways that I'm going to work to, to advance this agenda.
Okay. Um, I'd like to, you mentioned something about like, working with your partners in the community. So other than the community, who are going to be your, you know, who should be in the political process, major partners, who do you consider to be like, the major partners that you would like to align yourself with as, you know, as a city council member?
Well, absolutely, the community should be leading, right? They should be informing. And, and when I say community, I know everyone means something slightly different. Sometimes you mean the organ, the grass tops, right, the organizational leads. I think clearly their institutions that have enormous, their key stakeholders and experience. But I do think we have to make sure that the grassroots, right, the actual residents are really fueling and leading how we develop policy and the kinds of policies that we pursue. I think it's, it, our community is incredibly diverse. Like many other New York City communities, we have like, I don't know, 50 neighborhoods within the district. It's multiracial, it's multicultural, multilingual. I think we need to make sure that we build a big table and that we, we set values, right, in terms of like, our own collective responsibility and what we're fighting for, because we need to do this together. We cannot have parts of our community fighting with each other. We get nothing in the end, which is what we've seen over and over again. So really setting this broad based table, hopefully being guided by values and creating safe space to work through some historical issues that are obviously present and tensions that are always arising in community. To really kind of move past and move through. So I guess everyone, right? Everyone from residents who are not affiliated to institutions, to those institutional stakeholders, everyone in between, I think.
Okay. All right. Well, um, following up, so as a, you know, representing your district, you're also going to be part of a larger city council. Where do you see issues that are divergent from those of your district? And how do you plan to kind of bridge that gap between those?
Great question. Yeah. And it really, the question gets at the heart of like, how do you, how do you do any of this, right? It is, it's the challenge and the beauty of the role of holding your, the representation of your, your district, which can be very unique, and also being a steward of the city, where we make citywide policy. So I recognize that tension and also opportunity. I think that's really about, you know, being the best advocate you can for your community. We are largely immigrant community and, you know, are, there are some historical needs that we have that I will just have to strongly advocate for. And hopefully, I can both convince my colleagues that this is a worthy approach and way that we can move forward together. Obviously, we need to support each other in advancing agendas that not only just, just support one community. So I think it's, I think it's part of kind of the advocacy and engagement and bridge building and relationship building and trust building that we're going to need to do. And it's actually starting now. And that's, that's a really exciting thing. I hope people see with kind of this class of, of new folks that are coming in. There is a very collaborative approach that I don't think I've ever seen in, in, in races, as much as I've seen this, this go around.
Okay, great. What I'd like to do is kind of open it up to people who are on, you know, on the call with specific questions, perhaps with like, specific topics or issues that they would like to see addressed that has come up, you know, in other meetings, whether it's around education, or ICE, or healthcare. So anybody have any questions?
Looks like we have a hands up for.
Oh, oh, great. Okay. Um, I can, I can, you have to unmute Jess.
Hey.
Yeah, we can. Yeah, we got.
Hi, guys. So my name's Jess Byrne, and I just wanted to thank you for serving on SLT and PAs. I'm actually, I actually chair the Community Education Council for District 22, your neighbors to the, let's see, east and south of your district. So education policy and practices are forefront on my mind at all times. So I just wanted to ask you, what you see, like, how would you, how would you envision kind of any changes to practices in the DOE going forward regarding and centered around parent involvement? So, you know, be, as somebody who's served on SLT, I think you understand, like, kind of where we can work and where we, where we don't have power. And so I'm just wondering how you see any changes to those policies?
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm thinking, I'm also in my head is the Panel for Education Policy and how they've kind of been a rubber stamp under mayor control recently, or not so recently. But I'm curious to see how, how you think parents should actually be involved in education policymaking going forward.
Yeah, thank, thank you. Thank you, Jess, for the question. It, I think it's something we've confronted a lot. You know, I think I went to the, in my minds, I went to the, to the panel immediately, right? I think that panel needs to be a democratically controlled panel, right? And it needs to be, I think all these bodies, right, need to be democratically controlled, need to be transparent, and need to be given true and meaningful roles, and not, not this kind of standard rubber stamp, or roles that, that fall outside, right? So like, their advisory. I think we, we need to create meaningful spaces for parents to truly respond and inform what's happening at, at the DOE from the top level all the way down to kind of the, the, the individual school level. So what that looks like is honestly, just more robust, both funding, more robust engagement around it, setting a very different kind of culture and expectation, changing some of these fundamental practices, and, and definitely modeling it at the top with a different kind of pep structure. It has to, it has to be different from what it is. I think we see the promise of that when the, when parents are, with that last vote, right, the first time they voted against the mayor, while not saying you have to, that is the only thing that signifies independence. It was unique in that it does show the promise of not having such a tightly wound body around who is appointing and who people are accountable to. So I think, I think we can, we can see the interests of the people expressed when, when we really open up and offer democratic structures for individuals. And so I would, I would insert real democracy at, at all levels. I hope that answers your question, Jess, but I could, I could definitely talk some more about it.
Okay. Thanks, Jess. Who else has a question? Ellen, you have to unmute. There you go.
Hi, Alexa. Nice to meet you. I want to take it over to healthcare for just a quick second. I see in your questionnaire that you're a supporter of universal healthcare. And I'm wondering, I hope that that means you're a supporter of the New York Health Act.
Yes.
And there is a candidate's pledge of support for the New York Health Act. And I wonder if you would take a look at it and see if you could sign it?
Oh, yes, Ellen, it definitely means I'm, I'm a big supporter of the New York Health Act, and I'd be happy to look at the pledge. I have not seen it yet, but absolutely. You're, you're on mute, just in case.
I just put the, the link in the chat.
Oh, okay, great.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Great. Thanks, Ellen. Um, David, I see you've raised your hand.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for coming, Alexa. My question is about our small businesses here in New York City. You know, at the best of times, it hasn't been easy to run a small local business. And the COVID-19 pandemic has really hurt a lot of our small businesses, especially, you know, restaurants, bars, and gathering places. So I'm wondering if you could talk about what are your ideas and, you know, what things would you want to pursue in the city council to sort of help our small businesses get through this?
Thank you so much, David. It is a tremendous concern to all of us. And sadly, by, I think by the time I get into the city council, I don't know what state of affairs we're going to be in, honestly. The trajectory is not looking good. I think we need to really, I think we need to stop offering loans to small businesses. It, it feels like an ongoing insult to injury. They have not used those loans because there's no, nothing else to borrow. So I think we need to, you know, we need to lean in and stop with the austerity politics and invest in the things that are most important. We know that small businesses are the lifeline of communities. They are what employs people. The biggest employers in most communities are the small businesses who hire from within the community. So I think we really need to lean into providing grants to those small businesses, being creative, and really looking at the kind of complex array of regulation that I have been learning about, that is mind blowing. And it's kind of like a Jenga puzzle, a six dimensional Jenga puzzle. So I think we have to really look at all those things and figure out like, what is critical? What is the goal? And how can we do it without strangleholding the businesses, honestly, and the small businesses? And coming from a community that also is home to immigrant businesses, many whom don't have access to capital, don't have great relationships with local banks, don't have language issues around even understanding like SBS applications. We need to figure out better ways to do outreach, to actually streamline those communications, and just stop creating bureaucracy where there doesn't need to be any. So, so these are some kind of basic notions. I think, I wish I could give you like, more detailed. I think those are things we're exploring. And I guess the last thing I'll say is, from my experience in talking with business owners, you know, one of the, one of the biggest challenges is the rent. And many of our businesses have been pushed out because not only are their, their margins were thin pre-COVID, but the rents continue to go up. So figuring out a way to stabilize commercial rent and offering clear pathways for businesses when they find themselves in trouble with the landlords, which is another issue. There is commercial harassment. We have laws on the books. We don't have a lot of business owners who actually know how to navigate that, and also how to even get legal support around that. So I think those are all different ways, pieces of different strategies to help stabilize the businesses. But we need grants and less loans.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Any other questions? Um, I'm going to ask one more question. I'm going to give you a few minutes, you know, a few minutes to wrap up, because we are kind of nearing this time. And since people started, got on a little bit late, I am really interested in this position that you have put forth called the Director of Public Realm. One of the things that we learned from COVID is the importance of public space. And there are so many interesting implications to public space, how we use them, where we feel safe. Certainly, this has come up, you know, with ICE. And what do you see the benefits of this Director of Public Realm being for the community in the city?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the question. Um, you know, it's, it's Director of Public Realm, you know, other cities have, have used this model. And, and certainly other countries have. And, you know, really just kind of lifts up the, the, both, it creates more transparency and more process around public spaces, right? And it, it almost rationalizes, right, the use of space. So I think it's an incredible opportunity. I think not only is, not only should we be looking at how to better utilize our public space and the value we place on that space, but also our public assets, right? I don't think we think about them at the macro level, and ways to protect and continue to kind of enhance our public assets, right? I think we've seen actually the opposite happen. Our public assets kind of being weathered away and privatized, and public spaces being kind of hidden in the knucks and crannies of private development. So I think it's a way to really just kind of lift up, shine a light, rationalize, and, and make it accessible to the public, make it accessible to, I think, one of the interesting things about director of the public realm, too, is the benefit to the arts and culture community who, who have really been impacted by COVID by not being in their theaters, right, in those spaces. And they need to take that outside. And so how can we, as a community, just better leverage our public space for all these different parts of our community that need it so much? We need it for mental health. We need it for economic reasons. We need it, gosh, for pretty much everything. So I think it has a lot of potential. And I hope, you know, a city can think about this in a different way.
Great. So, um, before I let you kind of close up, I do want to let you, first, thank you for joining us this evening, and let you know that the, the group, the South Central Brooklyn United for Progress, will meet on February 21st, I believe it is. And we will vote on, you know, in our democratic process, who we're going to endorse. And we will let you know at that point, you know, what we're going to be doing. So just so you know what our timeframe is. And I'd like to give you just a few minutes, just to kind of close up, such a nice thing we haven't had the opportunity to.
Oh, well, you know, again, thank you. This has been a fun conversation. I, you know, questions are, are always so great. I guess, oh, yes, ranked choice. Thank you for doing that. Yes. We are big fans of ranked choice. And thank you for modeling it. And this is helpful for our communities, right? So I guess, again, thank you. And, you know, I think, you know, my vision for the district is an empowered community, right, whose residents, where the residents can live in their full dignity, in healthy and safe and inclusive communities. This is the vision for all of New York City. And I think we share this vision. And so, you know, I, I'm running for my immigrant And so, you know, I, I'm running for my immigrant neighbors who are afraid. I'm running for the little girls who are told they're not enough. I'm running for the hard-working people that just can't catch a break because our system seems to be so good at creating trap doors instead of springboards for people. And so, I'm just truly committed to centering our community over profit, our community over how we do things, because that's how we've done it for years. You know, I think we need to vision a new way of operating and we need to be bold about it and unafraid and create space for re-imagination. And so, I hope we will be on this journey together. I thank you all for your time and your commitment to Brooklyn. And I look forward to engaging in more conversation with you.
All right. Well, thank you so much for your time. And as you, as we said, we are posting the interviews and you can share it on, you know, on your website if you'd like to and, you know, present yourself to more people.
Great.
All right. Thank you. Good night, all. Thank you, all.
Thank you.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
All the best.
You too. Bye.